Good evening everyone, adequate notice this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, Middletown Patch and the Middletown Township Public School District website and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor administrative offices in each elementary, middle and secondary school. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Pfefferlin?
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minewes?
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Cottrell?
Here.
I need a resolution for executive session to discuss matters of personnel, HIV and negotiations.
Second.
Call on favor?
Aye.
Discussions?
Close.
We'll be back.
Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle and secondary school in the district. Go full.
This is Caminiti.
Here.
Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mrs. Farley.
Here.
Mr. Heffernan.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Binuys.
Here.
Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco.
Here.
Mr. Capone. Here. We're now going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for Henry Lanza- Harry Lanzetta passed away on December 13, 2021. Mr. Lanzetti served the district as a night custodian at Ocean Avenue Elementary, Navisink Elementary and Bay Shore Middle School. He retired in 2018 and continued to work as a substitute custodian in the district. We extend our condolences to the Lanzetti family. Okay, I want to call Dr. Meg Young to do a presentation to Mental Health Services in Middletown. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Meg Young. I'm a school psychologist with the district and equity and inclusion specialist. So I'm just going to present a little bit tonight on the continuum of mental health and social emotional learning supports that we have in the district. To move to the next slide. So just kind of just- Just to start, I'd like to talk a little bit about the counseling staff that we have employed in the district. So there are approximately 65 mental health professionals that are full-time employees of the district. These include social behavior specialists that work in all of the elementary schools, student assistance counselors. One works in each of the secondary schools. Of course, we have guidance counselors at the secondary level and school psychologists and social workers. And I do think it's worth noting that about a third of these professionals also have mental health clinical license outside of their school credentials. And I say that just to give you some depth of understanding about the level of training and experience that our professionals have. So when we talk about social emotional well-being, I just want to make the distinction between social emotional learning and mental health. And you'll see later in the presentation why this is an important distinction when we talk about levels of service or tiers of service. So social emotional learning is a set of skills that students can, or adults, can actually be instructed in. So CASL is the leading organization when we talk about social emotional learning. And they really promote five core competencies of self-awareness, self-regulation, responsible decision-making, relationship skills and social awareness. And these skills can be, like I said, taught to students and adults. And they really can be a foundation for prevention measures and a proactive approach to mental wellness. Mental health generally is talked about on a continuum of functioning. So while the ideal is for someone to be in the area of good mental health, practicing good mental health hygiene, there are a whole number of reasons why it can run into obstacles that can impact their ability to function. So just to talk a little bit about social emotional learning in our schools, this is just a sample of some of the programs that run in our schools. There are a whole bunch of programs that run, and they really can vary building to building depending on the programming that's happening. Responsive Classroom is a program that runs in a lot of our elementary schools and some of our middle schools. Myth Break Seminar, a new class this year that is required of all freshmen, and it's really built around the five principles of social emotional learning. And then you can see we have some other samples here. Choose to be nice, Mindful Action, Leadership. These are all programs that touch on aspects of social emotional learning for students. So when we start to talk about our framework of resources, we really started to try and think about them in a tiered system. The tiered system is very similar to the tiered system for which we think about academic intervention. So if we look at Tier One, those are universal type interventions. And typically, most models will say that 80 to 90% of your students will just need that level of intervention. So that's general intervention that's available to all students, either in their classroom or throughout their school, during the school day. Then when you move up the tiers of intervention, which we'll talk about in a little bit, Tier Two is more targeted intervention. And Tier Three is the highest level of intervention, and that's more intensive. So when we look at our, some of our services that are available, like we said, in Universal Tier One, we have social emotional opportunities in the school and in the classroom. We have school-based prevention and awareness programming through the SACS, the SBSSs, Guidance Council and the Child Study Team. And then just that goes culture and climate issues, inclusive and trauma-informed setting for all students. We also have access to wraparound services. Our nurses do a really good job of providing referrals for students who need additional medical or dental work. And then we also have social services supports through all of our support staff, child support staff. When we talk about Tier Two and Tier Three intervention, we're talking about more targeted mental health interventions. So these might be things like more physical support provided through agencies like the YMCA. We will be having more Tier Two interventions through ESS starting within the next couple of weeks. And there's always the option to refer out into the community. Then we also have a level of mental health supports that don't really belong in any tier. They can happen at any level. And these are our more acute supports, so they are threat assessment procedures and also our traumatic event response teams. Then when we talk about pathways to access, I think this is a really important point because this is where we get asked the most questions, is how do students or parents access services? So the pathways, move on to the next slide. The pathways really can look similar. So this is why it's really important if a student is struggling for them to know who to turn to or for a parent to know who to turn to. So for universal Tier One supports, they wouldn't really need to ask anyone for that. These are, again, general supports that are available to all students in their classroom or in the school throughout the school day. When we're talking about Tier Two or Tier Three supports, these would really be mainly through the SBSS or the Guidance Council. So the student or a parent can contact either that support staff member themselves, or they can contact their child teacher. Or the student can advocate for themselves through their teacher, access to support. And then those more acute supports, they're really triggered by various specific events that start a chain of events or a protocol in place. Then in addition to those, that framework, we also have a mental health board that has been in existence probably for about five or six years now. And it's a volunteer group of all the mental health professionals in the district. We usually meet about four times a year to discuss the different things that we're seeing, the different needs, the different challenges. When we've met- When we met right before we reopened in 2020, we thought it would be a really good idea to start asking administrators to attend those meetings because they are a key piece of the puzzle. And last year was the first year that we met all the counselors and administrators together to start to talk about some of these issues. And it turned out to be a really productive year. We formed subcommittees and focused on these three main areas that you see listed here. This year, we've kind of gotten off to a bit of a slower start just because of all the obstacles. Just getting together has been more challenging, but we did finally have our first meeting where we were able to kind of touch base and see if there was any opportunity for us to work on things this year. But that mental health board has been really critical in just helping raise awareness of different things that we're seeing throughout the district. Then finally, this is just a page just reflecting a lot of our community collaborations and connections. I know it's really hard to see because there's quite a few, but some of the most notable ones are obviously Effective School Solutions. They've been in the district for a number of years, and now they are going to expand their programming with us to help even more students and families. The Mental Health Association has been very critical in helping us do a lot of professional development and training of our staff. The community YMCA is in all of our buildings. We have relationships with all of the local hospital emergency rooms for when we have to send our students for crisis screenings. And you can see there's a number of other community collaborators listed here. And then last but not least, we certainly recognize the importance of parent resources and support. The district website now has a pretty comprehensive list of resources and supports that any parent or community member could access at any time. If you are on the homepage, it's listed right under our district. Right. And then it says Community and Mental Health Resources, and it'll take you to a very long list of resources. Some of them are resource guides that connect you to resources throughout Monmouth County and the state. Some are more direct local resources. So those are accessible to parents at all times. We also developed a local provider list, so all of the counselors in the buildings have access to an updated list of mental health professionals that are local to this area. It includes their contact information, which insurance they accept, what age group they work with, and what issues they specialize in. And this is a really helpful resource for our counselors because it can help remove a lot of obstacles in helping parents find a therapist that's appropriate for their child if that's the resource that they're looking for. And then, like I mentioned, we also have a variety of resource guides connected on the website.
I have one question. Thank you, Dr. Young. I think this is really great. I think, you know, I'm excited to see the expansion of ESS, you know, throughout the schools now. I think that will make a huge difference as well as hearing more in the future about the restorative practices, which will be incredibly beneficial to students. Obviously, before COVID started, I think in our effort to educate parents more about the mental health network itself and what was available, we were doing some presentations. And I remember attending one specifically about suicide prevention. I can't think of the organization that we had partnered with that had come in to talk about it. But now, as things start to open up, are we thinking about doing or trying to do more of those presentations now to parents going forward?
So as part of the contract with PSS, there's an extensive parent and age group series that's in the planning process right now.
Okay.
So there will be workshops with parents that will be educational in nature to inform parents more about issues that are prevalent right now with students, kids and teenagers, and what parents could do to help support them.
Okay, great.
There's also, just locally, the Municipal Alliance is doing a mental health, mental health birthday training. It's a great training. It's free of charge. It's pretty intense, but it includes a very wide range of information if you're interested in mental health and just knowing more on what you could do to support anyone, really. I've done the training, and it's a really excellent training. So that's coming up in March. I'm actually talking to someone at the Municipal Alliance tonight, and there are still spots available.
Thank you, Ray. I just have one question. We do have ESS in all of our secondary schools. Is that correct? Or are they just in certain ones?
As of right now, or do you...
Now.
Right now, ESS just provides services for students who have IEP needs at North and South and at Thorn, but the Thorn program is eligible to anyötto or is appropriate and meets the postgraduate referral and...
So we're transferring kids into Thorn if they need those services.
Can we just get some of these things out to the parents instead of just leaving them as passive on the website? Like even if we can put maybe in the newsletter or something, but that, the things to look for for parents at home, I think, is important. And I think once a parent has to really search, it's probably past the point of when you can kind of just make it a focus in their home. Thank you.
Well, any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Young.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Mrs. Walker's superintendent update.
Yes, what I have today is my dates right here. Just going to give you some dates for the middle school promotion ceremonies that we have scheduled and the high school. So right now, I don't, we don't have times yet. That will come out, and your building principals will get that out to you as soon as we determine them, which will be shortly. But right now, we know that we have scheduled middle school for June 22nd, high school for June 24th, and a rain date, I mean, I'm sorry. Let me start again. Cut the tape. Okay. Middle school, June 22nd, high school, June 23rd, and the rain date, the 24th. So it's 22nd, 23rd, rain date, 24th.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to a committee report, Mr. Heffernan, the legislative.
Yes. So the Legislative Committee met with Assemblyman Jerry Sharfrenberger and members of his staff to discuss current topics impacting school districts, particularly Middletown Township. Topics we discussed were, one, outlook for state aid, three more years of the S2 implementation. We spoke about special education aid. Current categorical state aid for special education assumes a percentage of special education enrollment of fifteen point four percent. Middletown's special education enrollment is close to twenty percent. Structural results of Middletown being short-funded in this area. We also discussed extraordinary aid. The district received an increase last year, which resulted in approximately seventy-five percent of Middletown's eligible, eligible excess cost being funded. However, the normal funding percentage is between fifty and sixty percent. The district does not get its annual allocation until after the close of each school year. We discussed transportation, of course. Federal regulations continue to impose more stringent licensing requirements on the school bus drivers. Committee also discussed the pending universal pre-K initiative for New Jersey and financial and facilities impact that it would have on the district. Governor Murphy also stated the goal is to have universal pre-K in place statewide by 2030. This should require a significant amount of additional staff, pre-K-appropriate educational space for the district. We had met on February 10th.
Great, thank you so much.
Was there, was there any solution or any plan that more of them could be going forward?
This was the initial meeting, so we actually just started working on all the topics. So I'll get back to you on that as soon as we come up with some resolutions.
And Assemblyman Sharfrenberger mentioned that this was valuable to include committees he's on. I believe he's on Education Committee, the Budget Committee. So he was looking for our input to take back to his committees.
Yes.
So I just, I just want to raise one thing, Larry. I forget what day it was. I think it was February 7th. I attended the New Jersey School Boards County Association, and they had told all of those present that the new Senate Chair for Education, Senator Vin Gopal, is putting out a call to all districts that he wants to meet with them to discuss individual needs. So I don't know if it's possible to invite him to a meeting or have the Legislative Committee reach out to him, but I do think as a new chair, this is a great opportunity for us to establish a relationship with him. And I'm really happy to hear, again, you know, Senator Osceamone is talking about, especially the extraordinary special education aid, which is a huge, huge issue for us. And so I think if we can do the same with Senator Gopal, I think that would be a really great sort of start in terms of him getting, you know, more used to what our needs are here in Middletown.
I absolutely agree. I think I read that article. I think they're talking about the 2008 funding model, right?
They are, but he also...
Yeah, S2, right?
Yeah, but he's also introduced a separate bill that's going to create a task force. I know task force can really sort of bog things down, but it's also, you know, that separate initiative there to really not only look at the S2 funding formula and sort of whether or not it's good, you know, in terms of how it works with districts and stuff, but also looking at the extraordinary special education aid as well, which, again, both are incredibly important to us as a district, right? But because of the way everything is structured around the special education, we're really losing count on a lot of dollars there that we could use. And so I think it would be good if we can somehow meet with him.
Okay, great. Thanks, Debbie. Great. Moving on to co-curricular and technology, Mrs. Caminiti.
Co-curricular and technology had a meeting prior to our workshop. And I'm going to start easy here. Everything's going status quo with technology. I have to be careful what I'm saying because we're afraid what could happen off of it. So status quo with technology, but co-curricular on that note. We were discussing, and we wanted to bring it to the board to bring it up for discussion, volleyball. Volleyball has been fundraising and paying for parts of volleyball on their own, but the committee wanted to bring it to the full board and talk about it through three years if they can do it. Wanted, first of all, they want to have a JV team also. So we, only for the girls because they don't have interest, the boys, they don't have enough boys interested in JV to have a full team. So they're only talking about bringing JV for North and South girls. And as a committee, we were discussing that we'd like to bring it to the board to see if the board would okay funding volleyball a hundred percent instead of having PR funds. So it's up for discussion.
So JV and VOS, yeah.
Well, I think volleyball is around thirty-five thousand a year, and the JV would be twenty-five thousand, and that's really just for the coaches because we don't buy any transportation for volleyball. Is it thirty-five plus twenty-five? Would it be, right? Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's more than...
But no, no transportation.
You should talk about starting off.
If that would just be the coaches and...
And some uniforms.
You mean, they're doing fundraising, right?
They have been doing fundraising for the last three years. They got a hundred percent successful with all the fundraising, but they've tried.
We've been through a crazy two, three years, so I guess maybe we could...
It's our kids, and we should, I mean, we should finance it if we can. Yes, I am.
Well, I, I don't know. I'm just, we could just include it in our twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and what would happen is that we would not do a contract with volleyball in Middletown next year for them to share the costs. Every year, when we're sharing the costs with the parent group, we do a contract with them. We set the payment dates, we set the parameters. If the board was funding the program, then we just wouldn't need that contract for next year.
Why don't we just go around and get a consensus of the board? Wouldn't think about this.
So maybe you're saying just put it in the budget, and you don't need to vote on it individually?
It doesn't have to be an individual...
All right. Let's just do a consensus now and see if everybody's for it, against it, or...
Amy Duroppo?
I mean, I support it.
Who opposes?
Well, I support it because I brought it up.
I mean, really, you would just say if the board's in consensus, it's just not a voting meeting, so we wouldn't be passing anything.
There you go.
Okay. Forward into, I guess, what, the twenty-second century, whatever?
The twenty-third century.
Twenty-third century, whatever century we're in. Well, Middletown wants to move forward with digital ticket-taking. So instead of having a pay, instead of, when you go to a concert these days, not that I've been to many concerts, but apparently everybody buys their ticket online, shows their phone, walks up, goes like this, and comes in. Well, now, when you go to the wrestling match or you go to the football game, instead of having tickets, we want to do it via our home. Yes, there's people that don't have cell phones. They won't be able to purchase a ticket. They'll have technology there, a computer or laptop, whatever, and they'll be able to still purchase tickets. But instead of printing tickets and distributing tickets and having people at the games handing out tickets, we want to go digital. That's something we'd like to bring forward.
Saving a bunch of trees as well, right?
Is there a cost associated with that?
No, not at all. Matter of fact, there's a savings.
There's a savings, probably, yes.
Because we don't have to have as many staff members for that to handle this.
So cost to the business.
No, but there is a cost to the consumer. Because like when you buy a ticket online and you use a credit card, there's a fee, a service fee. The consumer pays it. So let's just say, I don't know, eighty-five cents. I don't know the exact figure. They didn't know the exact figure. More tickets that are sold, apparently changes.
But the person has the option of buying it online or in person?
No, 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 no. It's always online, but if you don't have the means of doing it with your cellphone when you come in, you will have technology there if you do it at the door. It's still going to be online.
So it's only credit cards, no cash?
You see what happens to the kids if they need that. Yeah, so you're in. They don't have credit cards. So you're going to be really the ones that are paying cash.
I think maybe we'd have to start with a hybrid system, maybe.
Help me.
We're talking about home football games and basketball games.
Kids do use PayPal. They borrow money in their PayPal account.
Do they use their lunch account? That's interesting.
Like there's some people that don't have PayPal, they're like, just throw in cash and you get in. You don't want to stop that.
It's kind of fun teaching kids how to pay when you get a credit.
It's a good idea. I just think that we just need to make...
Well, apparently it was working already, she was saying. Whatever you want to do.
I just want to think about the people that don't have access to PayPal.
I understand, I know you're...
The parents that don't have a credit card. So, you know, we have to figure a way to make it work for all of them.
Will we still take cash?
So we'll take a PayPal or Venmo or...
Yeah, electronic payment.
Electronic payment, okay. Venmo, PayPal. I guess there could be actually maybe a, you know, something at the door by the, you can scan it, and maybe it takes off your credit card immediately.
No, but she's saying about people that don't use their credit card at all, don't and only pay with cash. I'm just curious, can we have a hybrid?
You have to figure that out because, you know, there's a lot of parents that don't want their kids to have their credit card number or don't want to have a credit card or their families that just have cash.
It's true.
When you eliminate, you eliminate the...
Maybe they could do a hybrid.
Yeah. You can still get their opinion, Mary, although that doesn't change their home status when they have access to credit or not. You don't need access to credit.
But you do a platform of some sort, to Mike's point, obviously, that the school...
I understand some of the stuff that I'm saying, only because I'll tell you, I don't use Venmo. If you want to Venmo, forget it, you're in trouble.
I don't either.
I don't know, even know, understand how to do it. I know they do. They know everything, but...
We know the kids do, but the point is, do they have access? And that's something that we have to keep in mind. We don't want to leave any of these kids out. They have to have access to get into these events.
So, no one's doing it yet. Do you think it's going to be in the next year or so?
Okay, then maybe we just have to explore it a little bit more, see what other people do.
It's a matter of doing it the right way, but I'm sure there's no holding back at this point, obviously.
It's going to happen, but when it's going to happen?
How is it, how would it work with even like the younger kids that come to the games and stuff?
Yeah.
But they have to have a cellphone to show the ticket, right? Oh, you can print them? Gotcha. That makes it a little more digestible.
Yeah. Congratulations to this. We have three events.
One of our schools already was using the ticket, so.
So, the people at the ticket booth will take a piece of paper that the kids walk up with? Or stand off the phone?
They'll have a QR code probably on there and they just scan it.
And if we have people taking QR code, they also could take cash from the kids who don't have that, possibly, right? So, they're already there. It's not like we're getting another person to be there, so.
I mean, I guess sort of a phased-in approach and seeing how it works.
I don't know. I know what I was trying to say. We need to work with that now.
Yeah, I mean-
Kind of stuck in this, you can't get a pill of Jolt if you're taking one of them and you're money.
That's right.
Why not have a hybrid system?
I'm saying, we can try, but there has to be a point in time, obviously, that, you know, we progress a little bit.
Eventually, we will, like-
I mean, the horse and buggy was pissed off at the Model T because the Model T came out. Nothing about it, you know? You have to progress at that point. But, yes, I agree, every student should have, be available for a ticket.
Yes.
I think we can all figure that out.
Okay. So, that's cool.
Thank you, Ms. Kemen. Moving on to student services, Mr. Will.
We don't meet till next week.
Next week, all right. Catch you next round. Facilities and finance, I'm going to pass over to Ms. Dari.
Thank you. So, our committee met last week on the 9th, and we discussed a variety of topics. First of all, under facilities, we are still working on a district bid or cooperative agreement for the several unit events that need replacement at Bay Shore and High School North. We also reviewed the status of other projects that are going on currently with the committee, and we have, the detailed notes are posted in the BOE portal for everyone's review. We, the committee also started talking about the HVAC projects that we have planned, or that we need to plan to utilize our ESSER funding, the ARPESER funding. We have approximately $3.2 million in funding. We discussed using these funds to replace remaining rooftop units at Bay Shore that have not been completed. We've done all of the secondary schools, with the exception of Bay Shore was not completely replaced yet, so we are looking to apply some of those funds for that. And then utilize the remaining funds to address other HVAC priorities. The committee and the district will be working with Spiesel over the next couple of months to identify the other high priority HVAC projects, to work on the scope of work for a bid that will be going out in the fall timeframe. We also talked about the 22, 23 facilities budget. The committee reviewed the draft of the budget for next year. It is still a work in progress. There are still things that we're working on scoping out and getting some estimates for and revising some of our estimates that we have. That working draft has also been posted on the BOE portal. We talked about a proposal from the Navisink Library, and the committee reviewed some of that information to see whether that would be something that would be feasible with our budget for next year. So, we had a discussion on that. We also talked about the 21, 22 budget status and our 22, 23 budget. We talked about the status of where we are currently with our current year budget and the fact that it does look like there will be some additional savings available that we may use to offset some of the costs that we have planned for the 22, 23 budget. Because at this point, as it normally is, our 22, 23 budget is showing a deficit right now between revenues and expenditures, with the expenditures being more than the revenues that we have available to fund it. So, process we go through each year is to revise the budget and take out things that we may not be able to fund, and also look for ways to alternatively fund things so that we relieve some of the stress on the next year's budget. Some of the savings that we've realized this year were from grants that were awarded after the budget was developed, such as, just as an example, we received an ARPIDEA grant for tuition that was a little over half a million dollars. You know, there has been also some savings in salaries with employees taking unpaid leaves. There's been a list of retirements. We had some savings in health insurance. So, again, we're looking to leverage some of those savings to relieve some of the pressure on next year's budget. We will also be talking about the budget at next week's voting meeting in more detail as far as the areas of the budget and what's planned for the budget. We also talked about possibly adopting a policy on joint use of facilities that was proposed or recommended by Strass Esme. However, as a committee, we talked about it and we determined, we're already doing joint use of facilities with our municipality. There really was no need at this time. It's not a mandatory policy to adopt, so we decided to defer that at this time. It's always something we could do later if we felt the need to. And there will be two other items on the voting meeting that we didn't get to talk about in our committee. There'll be just a couple of transportation contracts that we'll be recommending to cover of routes that have come up that we need to cover, quotes for athletics, basically. And we'll also have the ESEA fiscal year '22 grant allocations on the agenda to, for the board to approve as well. The title war. And that's our report.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Dari, just going back to the budget that you're going to present now next week at the voting, are you under any stress because the governor's budget has now moved to March 8th? So, we actually have one week for you to make changes. I know you're laughing about it, but that's a problem. Because we don't know what our cuts are going to be, we don't know what's really going to be going on.
The governor's budget has been postponed. We haven't received any official notification about when our state aid will be released. It is normally 48 hours after the budget's addressed. And we also haven't received any notification about the budget deadline being extended, when the district would have to submit their budget. So, we've been under this situation before. We will keep moving forward in our process and hopefully, unless there's a dramatic change in what we're expecting, it shouldn't cause us too much of an issue, but it's not, it's not optimal, no.
No stress, right? Thank you. Okay, moving on to policy, Mrs. Tobacco.
Hi. Policy met on February 8th, and let me just look at my notes. We discussed a couple of mandatory policy changes. The first one is P2422, the comprehensive health and physical education. We are putting this on the agenda for a first reading, and it is, again, a mandatory policy. We also discussed religion in schools, which had been tabled at a prior meeting. And we added an introductory statement to the policy that was a little bit more protective of religious expression in our schools and explained the changes to the policy. Another policy that was revised, sexual harassment of students. There's a policy and a regulation. The committee also discussed the Safe Return Plan and discussed, we had discussed the policy of creating, possibility of creating a resolution for eliminating masks prior to March 7th. Obviously, we did not move forward that resolution. And we also discussed a resolution that is on the agenda for supporting the Bill S1200, which is a bipartisan bill supporting Senator Vin Gopal and Senator O'Scanlon, and we'll talk about that more.
Okay, curriculum instruction, Mrs. Farley.
We're meeting tomorrow.
Perfect. Shared services, we did not meet this month, but just to reiterate that the feasibility study survey is out there. Social media is a big place to find it as well. Please, three to five minutes, just fill it out, just so we can get your input and your, you know, just to know what really the district really wants to meet. Thank you.
It's on the website.
We're through next meeting.
Next meeting is March 15th, March 23rd, I'm sorry, February 23rd, and then March 15th.
For shared services? Shared services?
Oh, no. Oh, we didn't put a meeting yet together.
Okay. It's normally tentatively scheduled for the second Monday of each month. And then we confirm each month if there's topics to discuss.
During draft of voting meeting agenda? Okay, that's it. Moving on to old businesses. Old business for anyone? New business? The only thing I have to say is reiterating what Jackie spoke about on the attachment for voting meeting. We have S1200 bill resolution, which we're looking to put forth. It's basically for the resolution supporting the Senate Bill S1200 on restoring local control over decisions impacting the educational, social, and emotional welfare of the children in Middletown School District. And it's bipartisan support from Senator Declan O'Scanlon and Senator Vin Gopal. That will be on the voting meeting next week.
The other thing that I probably should have mentioned under the facilities and finance report was the fact that we are opening up the bids tomorrow for the work on the high school bubble. So, depending upon the results of those bids, we would hope to have an award on the agenda for the board next week.
Great.
And we also do have an agenda item for the additional work that's being done under the safety grant that's on the agenda, the window gates and the security legs.
Yes, be good. Thank you. Right at this moment, we'll turn to public comment. Just step forth if you have anything to like to say. Just a second. Just your name and address for the record, please.
You're up to say something, Ms. Sharf. Just real quick on graduations. You're in the location this year? They're going to be on the high school fields. So, Thorn and North will be at North, Thompson and South will be at South, and Bay Shore this year is at, is at North.
Also, since we're talking about position Monday for volleyball, I was kind of surprised that our MTF, we have discovered that all the teachers that support Circle of Brands, Friendship Club, all of those social clubs, or special gates, and typical here is that they are volunteers and that there's going to stipend. So, the schools that have not started their programs, I understand, have probably no volunteers. So, if it's stipend, would incentivize, much less reward these wonderful teachers that are doing it now for years on the free time.
Well, I'll look into that because I believe the Friendship Club was stipended. I think there's at least two or three teachers at each level that get a stipend, but we'll look into it because we do value that, too.
Yeah. Because some are still not open.
Yeah, sometimes it's difficult to get, you know, the teachers to volunteer or, not volunteer, but to apply for these positions. So, we'll look into that and we'll see what we can do because we, too, like I said, we think they're really important.
I was kind of shocked. Maybe they just met now.
Yeah, that's probably what they meant, but we can, we can go out and try to recruit people.
On digital tickets, Brandings Attic did it, so I've got to assume you guys can figure it out. I will tell you just the fault of the issues we ran into, is there is quite an upcharge on prices. Maybe that will get better over the years, with more people coming to the game, but that was a big thing. Upcharge is almost 30%. The other, the other thing, we did have a bit, different time, and we didn't have one cash because we had to take into account, statistics show that when you have low paying games or events, the no-show rates can be up to 40, 50%. So, when you start selling tickets, you need to make sure you get more capacity for no-show. So, we had one cash lane, but we made it clear that digital tickets went first. We got priorities that people would incentivize to buy the tickets. But, yes, if all the seniors are coming to Brandings, we figure that out. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Seeing no other else coming up to the microphone, like to make a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? Discussion?